Doesn't affect me anymore.
Yes, okay. I'd like to call to order the November 12, 2019, meeting of the Rutland City Board of School Commissioners. You could all please rise and recite the Pledge of Beliegence.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, would Betty please note that all Commissioners are in attendance with the exceptions of Commissioners Pensick, Dejus, and Goldberg? All right. First item is the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda this evening? Any additions? All right, hearing none then. All right. The next item then is, again, we're establishing the consent agenda on those items that are routine and businesslike, which this consent agenda includes the minutes of the previous meeting, personnel memorandum. The clerk will note that there was a typo in that that will get corrected.
I would like to make a motion. We approve the consent agenda with the change in the personnel memorandum of the retirement date of Anita Crosby being 6/30/20, not 19. That was a typo.
I just had a, and I wasn't here last time, so I apologize, but I did watch the tape. So, I was just curious, can we comment on the consent agenda? Or, okay.
Can we comment on it? Yeah, if there's anything you feel needs to be reexamined or done separately, Cam, we can pull that off.
Okay.
But certainly comment. It'll be, it'll be done no differently than any other motion.
I just had a couple of comments, but otherwise I'm okay.
Sure, no, no problem, no problem. All right, so we have a motion. Is there a second for the consent agenda?
Second.
Second. All right, so discussion, Cam.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Mike for the pellet bid, because not only are we doing low bid for me, Mike is happy that it's in-state vendor, and so it's also five bucks a bag. So, it does have impact that doing our bidding procedures actually does reduce costs, so I'm happy with that. And then the other one on the consent agenda, the employee memo stuff, I just always abstain, so I don't have to repeat it, repeat me. Otherwise, I'm fine, thanks.
I often need to abstain this time because I have a relative on the coaching agenda.
Okay, all right then. Then all those in favor of the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Two. So noted. All right, communications. We do just have one written communication, and it's just a notification from our auditors that they will begin the audit of the fiscal year 2019 activities, which includes the single audit, which is the audit of federal funds. They expect to begin the audit actually, are they underway?
They'll start this week.
All right, they'll start this week and report approximately the end of March 2020. So Jim Reynolds is the partner that is supervising that, so that will be coming up. All right, anybody like to address the board? I see somebody's already up there. You can have two minutes and just say your name and where you're from.
My name is Catherine Krawitzky, and I live on Roberts Avenue. And I came here last month presenting you with the document that shows the effect of fluoridation and also talking about what the educational scores are here in Rutland City. You're probably wondering why we're coming before the Board of Education, and that's because we know that every one of you have our children's best interests at heart. That's why you're serving here, and that's for the teachers also, that we have their best interests. That's what, Rutland is a really tight community. But the issue is that we are voluntarily putting a neurotoxic water into our children, and there may be some effect. Science has shown that it is a neurotoxin and also an endocrine disruptor. What we're asking is that you please ask the Department of Health in the state to look at these issues again, because there's certain data that's coming up that is very suspect. And we will state, we have been doing this work since 2013, when we got chloramine not to be put in the water in Rutland. So what I'm asking you as the Board of Ed to please ask the Department of Health to look into the studies and see why there's discrepancy going on with Rutland County compared to, say, Bennington, that's non-fluoridated. Fluoridation has been a political issue for 70 years, and the teachers and education has taken a real hit in this country because they don't believe in real science anymore. A lot of people don't know what real science is. And educators can't identify that, and we know you can, that you have to step up when our children are at risk for possible brain damage. The precautionary principle says if there's any tendency toward that, and you have the 40 pages with the citations that show for a long time that that's been going on. Also, we're asking that Paul Connet come here in a, in a, on public webinar, a public seminar, so that we can talk about it again, because we were given wrong information when this went to a public vote. So that's why we're asking you, as a Board of Education, to step up for the health and well-being of our own children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any questions?
Just one quickie.
What's the city doing, anything?
The city is continuing to fluoridate the water.
So they're not doing anything?
Correct. Well, they are doing, they are doing.
There was a vote, and the city voted to continue to fluoridate the water.
Okay. Yep, thank you.
And as far as taking this up by, I would appreciate if you would take it up in a session. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'm gonna ask Hannah, who bravely showed up at the meeting. They weren't expecting her because there was no school today, but you were here, and you have a report to provide us, so.
Yeah.
Great.
So, the Encore Theater is performing Regarding Peter on November 14th, 15th, and 16th at 7:00 PM in the RHS Theater. This play was written by Andrew Michael Tar, who was a former Rowland High School graduate. And the Spanish National Honor Society hosted the third annual Veterans Day ceremony last Friday.
Excellent. All right, okay. Any questions for Hannah? She had to do it solo tonight, so did a good job. All right. We're gonna move right on to improvement plans. We have both the middle school and the high school. So I believe we have our middle school principal and associate principal who will be presenting. So Patty asks you to lead off. You and Sharon will be leading us through the Rutland Middle School Improvement Plan. So, welcome.
Thank you. Before I begin, if I could just take one minute to thank everyone in the Rutland City Public School System for being so incredibly supportive to me through my transition from being a classroom teacher to the principalship. I especially want to thank Dave and the administrative cabinet for being so generous with their time. They truly have been unbelievable. They come seek me out to make sure I'm doing well. And Sharon's been incredible as well. So I just want to thank you all for all your support. So yes, tonight Sharon and I will present some updated information on our continuous improvement plan for the 2018-2019 school year. And I believe that you've received this information in your packet, so we're just gonna kind of highlight some areas for you. Our first goal was, and is, to improve student outcomes in mathematics and ELA by fully implementing the Rutland City Public Schools tiered instruction process. So how did we do in 1819? We partially achieved our goal. First, we used a number of student assessments to identify students in need of Tier 2 and 3 supports, specifically using our A reading and our A math fast bridge screeners, our scholastic reading and math inventories, and our SBAQ scores. We also implemented a tiered math instruction called ACE Math. Students were presented with the same math curriculum as the regular Tier 1 instruction, but it was at a slower pace with more manipulatives and supports for students. On this class, as well as Tier 2 interventions, which we called Math 180 and Read 180, were taught by our Tier 1 classroom teachers in these subjects. Read 180 data collected from the end of the year did not show the projected student growth outcomes that we hoped for. Our educational support team, which in Rutland Middle School is known as our PST, our Positive Solutions Team, was not consistently implemented. There were not enough regular meetings that were held on each student to determine the level of progress and whether or not they needed more or less instructional support. So why did this happen? We did not have consistent meeting time built in our schedule that would allow for a full complement of participants, which would be an administrator, parent, or guardian, the classroom teacher, school counselor, or school psychologist, and a team leader to participate in the meetings. We also had a lack of substitutes to cover teachers to attend these meetings if they were held during the school day. Again, due to conflicting schedules, students who needed both their English Language Arts and math Tier 2 supports, or needed both Tier 2 supports and Tier 3 supports in English Language Arts, for example, were removed from their science or social studies classes to receive that support. So what did we learn and what did we change? Because a number of students were not motivated to do their best on the benchmark assessments that we give, we decided to develop an incentive program. All students took the assessments at the beginning of the year. Those who met or exceeded the standards only needed to take the assessment again at the end of the year, and those who did not meet or exceed the standards needed to take four sessions of the test. Tier 2 instruction requires training for the Math 180 program. Not all of our math teachers were able to attend the training, basically because some had been hired late into the season. This created a problem with fidelity in the program implementation. We decided to discontinue the ACE model and create a Tier 2 math class staffed by one interventionist. We've also dedicated Tier 2 and Tier 3 reading interventionists for the students for that one class. Read 180 has been replaced with the Lexia program. The Lexia program is more cost-efficient than the Scholastic Read 180 program, and it will provide us with the ability to disaggregate results into the individual reading skills and underlying comprehension skills. Assessments can be given over a number of days, thereby responding to how a student's stamina is impacted. One of the kids that we talked to about the Lexia program actually quoted, "It's fun and I learned from it," so I think he liked it. Our literacy coach is monitoring our PST meetings to ensure that they occur as scheduled, and our schedule's been changed to a five-block A-B day, which allows students to take needed intervention classes as well as their science and social studies classes. I don't know if you want to go just goal by goal, if you have any questions or wonderings?
Nope, and they just, that's fine Patty.
So goal two was to increase our family and community involvement. How did we do that? Well, we partially achieved this goal. We have this year our Rutland Middle School Parent Teacher Collaborative, our presence at our community events, pastries with the principals, a barbecue that we held at the beginning of the year for our open house, dance night, and a school event, punch cards. So how did we do? Our RMS PTC began in early spring of 2018. It's grown steadily but slowly. The group has organized our Grade 8 breakfast in June of 2018 and 19. In November, actually, tonight, we had our first group's fundraiser, which was at Five Guys. I am happy to report that it was very well attended. Sharon and I were up there earlier. Funds raised will be used to support activities at Rutland Middle School, and this group does have a regularly scheduled meeting for the second Thursday of each week. The Rutland Middle School PTC has had representation at National Night Out each August and Neighborhood Works Fall Festival in 2018. The PTC encouraged participation in the local color run coordinated by Northeast School. A creation of a community chorus was not successful, unfortunately. Single event days are more effective, we discovered. An informal meet and greet is our pastry with the principal, which occurred in 2018 and 19 on the opening day of school, and was well-attended. We had standing room only. This replaced an evening grade-level parent meeting for which our attendance had dwindled in the past. So we're gonna look at adjusting the hours for this to see if more people could participate if there were different hours throughout the month. In lieu of a formal open house, a barbecue with many interactive academic department opportunities showed an increase of threefold in attendance. Again, those informal events seem to be much better attended by folks, and we should continue those. In September 2019, the first Rutland Middle School PTC-sponsored community event was led by Born to Dance and occurred with some really good attendance. And to encourage student attendance at Rutland Middle School events, we did have a punch card system so that we could attract student attendance with drawings for a movie, passes, and the like. And we noticed that student attendance had dwindled, and staffing was really problematic for this, so after two years, we decided that we would not continue that. Goal three, beginning in January of 2018, we'll begin to implement PLPs for all 7th and 8th graders. And by June of 2019, each student in Rutland Middle School will have a fully-developed personalized learning plan, and will utilize the various templates and guidelines that are provided on the Agency of Education website. So we achieved this goal. By January of 2018, all Rutland Middle School students had actually developed a personalized learning plan. Each incoming 7th grader built their initial site that year, and the Rutland Middle School 8th graders continued to add to their previously constructed PLPs. They did this with the help of our Rutland Middle School Technology Specialist and a PLP committee that we had put together to instruct and support all staff and students. Each component of the PLP was rolled out to teachers first, following the Agency of Education guidelines. Students refined their PLPs during the 18-minute advisory time with their advisory teachers. And our PLPs were used at our March 2018 family conferences, and then were the primary resource we used for discussions during our March 2019 family conferences. And what did we learn and change? We maintained the PLP committee and our tech support into our 2018-2019 model. During this year, we did not have adequate time to develop and refine our student PLPs. In response to this need, next year's schedule includes flex blocks of 69 minutes, four times weekly, and some of this time is devoted to our PLPs. We received feedback that although families appreciated the student-led conference style with their child's advisory teacher, they would have liked an opportunity to meet with all of their child's teachers. So we'll consider holding a hybrid of the PLP conference and individual teacher conferences to meet this need. Staff feedback on rollout was positive, with one notable area of concern being careers. Although staff included career information in their instruction when it's applicable, the Rutland Middle School Social Studies Department has decided to implement a more intentional inclusion of careers in their daily teaching. A website, 802-U, was developed specifically for Rutland Middle School students by one of our teachers, Katie Gino, for students to explore career opportunities in support of their personalized learning plans. Goal four, to research restorative justice practices in schools and spend the 2018-19 school year building skills and structure to begin full implementation in 2019. How did we do? We partially achieved this goal. Faculty PLC book study was used. We read the book Better Than Cows or Sticks: Restorative Practices for Positive Classroom Management to Build Foundational Understanding. The team attended the Restorative Justice Conference Level 1 in August in Lake Maury, this was last year, with Community Justice Network of Vermont. In August 2019, some members of the initial team attended a Level 2 training, and five additional Rutland Middle School staff attended a Level 1 training at the same conference. And we purchased our Circle Forward books. What did we learn and what did we change? PLC groups met three to four times over the year. They expected to be learning the process of implementing the restorative circles, including community circles. The text was primarily about the history of restorative practices, which would have required more time and training. Initial attending team modeled a circle with the entire staff during professional development days in August of 2018. During the school year, a few restorative circles were facilitated by various trained individuals. We needed more trained staff to implement the support practice with fidelity and a schedule that allowed for more time. All staff have the Circle Forward book, with positive feedback from those who have implemented circles at any point during this year. And Circle Forward is the Restorative Justice Conference recommended text. And our last goal, five, is to improve our Tier 1 instruction in all classroom settings and across all content areas, thus decreasing the need for Tier 2, 3, and 4 interventions and increasing student achievement on academic measures, as well as soft measures such as attendance and behavior referrals. We partially achieved this goal. We have teaching teams, we had teaching teams of math, English Language Arts, science, social studies. As previously explained in our first goal, we had our ACE Math that was developed as a Tier 1 instruction targeting individual student needs. Instructional coaching included increasing student engagement, developing class expectations, collection and review of class-specific and content-area data, and modeling instructional strategies. Adults in the building focused on reducing hallway distractions and helping students to get to and from their classes. And project-based learning professional development, which was offered in June of 2018, was attended by six Rutland Middle School staff. Implementation of the PBL included the Tiny Houses, a math and science collaboration, and Gino University, which is a social studies endeavor including all content-area skills in which student teams designed a proposal for funding an archaeological dig. What did we learn and why did we change? Based on teacher feedback, the teaching teams allowed for consistent support of students, increased positive relationships with students, and provided wraparound support for students as needed. Teams became either STEM or humanities based on collaboratives for 2019-20 to allow for more opportunities for team-teaching project-based learning units, so students could make connections between core subject areas. ACE Math was discontinued in 2019-2020, as it had become a more homogeneously defined group of learners. Instructional coaching helped with the development of classroom expectations and provided various instructional strategies which improved student engagement and reduced in-class behavioral interruptions. By making adults aware of the number of students out of their classrooms, teachers and staff members had a better understanding of the impact of these potential disruptions and helped keep students in their classrooms. And survey feedback from students involved in PBL was overwhelmingly positive. PBL professional development was offered in June 2019 and in the summer of 2019, or 2018 and 2019, and was attended by some Rutland Middle School staff. So that's it. Does anybody have any questions?
Questions for Patty or Sharon, Hurley?
You know, you know I'm gonna ask this one. With your transition into the office, how are we doing the coverage for math and the math intervention that's needed in the building?
Great question. We have, so as you know, not only with my transition, but with, another math teacher had left us, so that left us with virtually two openings. Thanks to our wonderful Rutland High School colleagues, they have allowed us to utilize one of their teachers, so Kevin Brown has taken over my position. And there's the flex block that we talked about, that is being taken over by a combination of Lorraine Bargman Metz and Erica Wallstrom, because I teach two maths a day, so Kevin's doing the two math sections. And then the other vacancy is being filled by an existing person, Yvonne Panarello, and Yvonne is therefore teaching 7th grade math. Her intervention blocks that she taught, because she was the sole interventionist this year, have been distributed to the three teachers, and so Mr. Brown, Justin Vacy, and Yvonne herself are teaching those intervention blocks as an overload. And we are actively seeking two math teachers. I should say that.
Want to come out of retirement?
No.
Absolutely, Hurley.
Karen?
Can you explain what a PLP may look like for a 7th and 8th grader?
What it looks like? Sure. So we use our Chromebooks, and a PLP is a collection of what a student, who a student is. So from 7th grade, they start to develop a picture of, it's, the first page is all about me. So they have information about who they are as a person to start with, then they go through who we are as a learner, and then it's who we are kind of from an academic standpoint. So it's basically a collection of their learning styles, their likes and dislikes, their, what they're best at, what subjects they like the best. In my case, as a math teacher, for example, students would take pictures of some of their best work in mathematics. They'd take pictures of projects they had done, and that follows them from 7th grade through 12th grades. So virtually, as they start to compile all this information, you can see their growth over time in particular subject areas in, they could put pictures, some kids put pictures of things like, if they're in a dance class outside of school, a travel team, sport team, a horseback rider, lots of horseback riders who are very, and they'll write, they'll have pieces of their writing in there.
And there's also information about the career exploration, so as they do that, that's also incorporated into it.
So there is work that they've done, say, an essay or something that they can have, it's like a portfolio.
Absolutely, it's just like a portfolio.
And they continue to build on it. And what program? It's through, just Google Docs? Is it like a PowerPoint or something like that? How would you explain it?
It's actually slides, I think.
We had a committee pulled together, and they developed the template for it. Initially, it started on Google Docs and ended up in slides, so we had a really good team.
Yes, they're an awesome team. If you're interested, though, you can go to the Agency of Education website and see, because it's, you know, Act 77, so you're going through that process.
There's an outline that you're following.
Yes, absolutely.
And it goes through the grades with the student.
Yeah, yeah. And theoretically, they can then use that for college, you know, to promote themselves when they're looking at colleges or opportunities after they graduate from high school or as they graduate from high school. You're welcome.
And Cam, and then Charlene?
Yeah, on goals three and four, number four kind of caught my attention, because it's been one of the things that I've been advocating, is the hall monitors and the fact that it went down 75 percent. I know it's an issue of doing issue return. I was just curious, do you have enough? And, you know, always two more would be better. I was just curious as to how we can build upon that so that we get 100 percent stability instead of 75. I'm greedy.
So I'd like that. That's not a bad thing. I think the concern there is always quality of individuals, so you want hall monitors, in my opinion, who also can read kids, who understand, you know, the kids who are not participating in their education by being in that classroom, and how to, how to kind of wrap around them and know their needs and build a little relationship with them so that you can coax them. Yeah, coax them back into the classroom, because obviously, they're not feeling successful in that classroom, so they need to be able to feel successful. So I would agree with you, it's always good to have more, but quality is important.
And I had one follow-up if I could. It's probably huge to you, the one-minute interruption versus the two-minute interruption, but for somebody that sort of isn't there, what, is it somebody just talks out of turn? What constitutes an interruption? And how serious does it have to be in order to be counted as being a disruption? You know, because if somebody laughs, that's a two-second thing, and it may count as a statistic, and I was just curious as to what does that mean for a layperson?
That's a great question, and I will really tell you that it's very subjective. I think I can speak for most teachers that we all have different tolerance levels, and we also all teach a little bit differently, so where it could be totally appropriate to have some laughing in one classroom, in another classroom, given the nature of the subject, the nature of how you're teaching, it could not be, you know, as disruptive in one as the other. So I think that's a really hard... So I, I think that's a really hard, that's, I wouldn't call that, those statistics, firm statistics. I think that it's a general statistic that you're looking at. That's a great question, though.
Thanks. Charlene.
How long is flex time currently?
Sixty-nine minutes, four times a week.
So I guess maybe I misunderstood, because I was thinking that maybe we were changing to that, but maybe what?
No, we have it right now.
Okay, so what, and you, so you changed?
I'm sorry, so the problem is that we're reading something that happened, you know, as a response, a year ago, so we've made a lot of those corrections, if you will.
Because it weighs less, I'm assuming.
Eighteen minutes a day.
Okay, that's what I was.
Huge change.
Yes.
Yes. Eighteen minutes a day to sixty-nine minutes for, we don't have it on Tuesday because we have our shortened day. So it's the last block of the day.
Okay. I was just trying to, and what do kids accomplish during that time besides the?
Yeah, good question. So they do, they work on their PLPs, they also, there's a program called Enriching Students that, right now, we're pretty deep into where students will, and, but we're just starting with, with this age group. So bear with me when I say what we would like to have, is not necessarily exactly what we have right now, but that's what we're working toward. But it would be that students, either they are in need of some remediation, so they would sign up, either they would sign up or a teacher would sign them up to be able to go to a class during that period of time and see a teacher for extra support, or maybe they missed a test in that class and they're gonna make it up during that time, or maybe they need enrichment. So for some students, it could be that there's a bank of mini-units of instruction that teachers have provided in a Google Classroom, sorry, I talk with my hands, in a Google Classroom, and kids could go to that site, and those would be subject-specific. Maybe they want to do an extra math, or an extra science, or an extra social studies unit, and it would be graded, but the grade could only count positively toward them, not negatively. That way, you're not negatively impacting the kids who need the remediation, so it kind of levels the playing field a little bit through that lens. They also have a program that we're doing, help me with the program, what is it, on Mondays? Oh shoot, I just forgot the name. What's the name of the big book we're doing on Mondays? It's a social-emotional learning.
It is.
Thank you, resiliency, sorry. Resiliency that we're doing one day a week, so that's an actual curriculum that we're, that's supporting kids' social-emotional learning development. And then we do have community activities as well, so it could be a sporting event that we do. We had a faculty-student soccer game, those were all things that used to take time out of classes, and so now we do them during that flex block, so it doesn't take time out of their core classes.
Dave.
One quick thing, I was thinking about you, all good thoughts. And so I started two months ago today, I think you've been in your role for a month, maybe five weeks.
I started October fourteenth.
And you're just doing a great job, and I want to say that publicly. You've turned some interesting challenges into opportunities, and I know it's a work in progress, but you've made great progress, so.
Thank you.
Grateful to you for that. And the whole staff at the middle school.
Yes, the whole staff, for sure, for sure.
Right. All right. Thank you, Sharon. Patty.
Thank you very much, everybody.
All right, we now will ask the high school team, or?
I have no friends.
No friends.
Still can call them a team, right?
Hannah, you can help. So I'd like to first thank the board. So many members of the board were able to join us at our NIASC visit in October, during the Sunday event and the Wednesday event. That was very helpful for us, and it was great for you to be able to see what was going on and that, so thank you for coming. I start by saying that because at Rutland High School, we serve a few different masters. We serve you, of course, and we serve NIASC, and we serve the Agency of Education. So we have a couple, multiple different people that we're reporting to, and this continuous improvement plan that you have in front of you is that, that goes to the state. So this is the report that we're writing for the state. It has a lot of educational jargon, so I'm gonna try to ignore that for a bit, and just focus on this memo that I tried to create to try to keep it as simple as possible. Our goals come, of course, from the district, what we're aiming for in the district. They come from expectations that NIASC has for us, and they have come from expectations that the state has for us through the education quality standards. So those three things are asking us to do many different changes and to grow in our educational approach. Luckily, they almost always overlap, so everything that we are doing usually serves all three of those masters. So that's, that's, that's the way I wrote this. On the back of the memo, we have our goals that the high school's working on. I will say that NIASC, we just had our visit last month, that was the culmination of a year's worth of self-study. We came up with some goals that we're shooting for over our two- and five-year plan. NIASC is going to give us back a report within the course of a few, few weeks, I think, and we get a chance to respond to that, that's kind of in a draft form, and then in January, that'll be finalized. So some of the goals that we're shooting for, I think, will be all included in this, but we might have some adjustments, which makes sense. We adjust as we go along. Okay? So that's my, kind of, my introduction, and now if we flip over the page, I'm going to talk really briefly about each goal. On the right-hand column, you might notice that I have listed kind of where's the, where's the expectation coming from, the educational quality standards or NIASC, or the district itself. And I'm really talking about what we're shooting for in this report, because I think last May, we did this big, long report about how we finished the cycle. So I know Patty just talked about where they, where they arrived at and what they're shooting for. We already did where we arrived, so now we're shooting for the future. We are continuing with our approach to trying to be very, very clear about what we're teaching in our classes. In other words, standards or proficiencies, the state calls them. And then what we're really working on over the past couple of years is how do we get better at teaching? How do we use these standards to leverage and use better teaching methods to leverage all kids getting across the finish line? So that's been a, a two-year focus for us. That's something we're continuing this year and on to next year, for sure. We have a committee that is working with, they're doing a literature study, looking at trauma, effects of trauma on children, and how that affects their learning. So they will be working over the course of this semester, going into next semester, and educating the whole staff on how do, how do we work with kids with those needs, and how do we instruct better and change our systems to meet those needs. We have another committee that's looking at equity in education, and they're kind of doing the same thing, they're doing a literature study, and they're gonna make suggestions and take measurements as well to try to make sure that all the different opportunities at the high school are accessed by as many kids as possible, so that we're not leaving any one subgroup out. We have two committees, one each is looking at our STEM concentration and our global studies concentration. This is kind of, we've done this every couple of years, where we've, we've looked at the concentrations, we're reflecting them against two rubrics by two different organizations, the Carnegie STEM Initiative, and the Asia Society has a global studies focus that says, if you had the best STEM program in your school, the best global studies program in your school, what would it look like? So we want to look at our, what we offer, and try to make sure that we're, we're meeting those expectations and then shifting if we see fit. The fifth is that we will be working with the middle school next semester. This is also a NIASC requirement, that we try to make sure that our curriculum is in alignment, seven through twelve, grade seven through twelve. And last, our, our goal is, we have another committee that's looking at, it's kind of like a mini NIASC. We, we've worked with this organization called Marzano Resources, and they have a process by which a school can look at different elements of what it, what it offers the, the community, and do we meet those expectations as best we can? So we looked last year at safe and healthy schools and collaborative culture. We went through a whole process called the High Reliability School System. We went through a process with Marzano, and they said, yep, you've, you've done everything you, you should be doing, or there's some adjustments that you should make, therefore you're certified at that level. We're going, going on to the next level, which is good instruction in every classroom. So there's a committee that will be looking at that, and, and we hope to get that certification as well. So it's just another way for us, in a, in a smaller dose than NIASC, to reflect and try to be as good as we can be. So that's it, my very short summary.
Questions for Bill.
All right, I mean, I just want to comment, too, that, I mean, it was great for those of us that worked, that took advantage of the NIASC, but what was very clear to me was the exceptional level of preparation, and we've been kept up to date, obviously, on, on the work that the high school team and the administration has been undergoing to prepare for that. It is no small feat. I heard through the grapevine that one of the reviewers thought it's one of the best high schools he's ever seen in New England. So I think there is real pride that Rutland City Public Schools can take in Rutland High School. I will say, as a parent of one graduate and another currently at the high school, that, I mean, I'm certainly proud both as a board member and also as a parent of all the work, but it was very, very clear to me from the team, its observations, its comments, that people that really know what they're looking at, really know what they're talking about, also say the same thing. So congratulations to the whole high school team for that. I think that was very, very well done.
Can I add to that, Dick?
Yes, you can.
So thank you to the board members who were there on Sunday, and Ann and Cam were there on Wednesday and heard the visiting committee chair. So you're not gonna like what I'm gonna say, okay? Just telling you right now, Bill, you're not gonna like it. So I have been on both sides of NIASC. I was the leader in an independent high school, Rutland High, an elementary and middle school, and a university, so four times as a leader of a school being evaluated through the New England Association. I've also served on a lot of visiting committees and have chaired some. So I have never heard the unbridled praise in forty-something years that I've been doing this, that I heard that day from the visiting committee chair, who is from Connecticut and has observed schools and evaluated schools in all six New England states. He's done many of them, he's on the commission, Pam's on the commission as well, which oversees all of NIASC. And so what he said, and Ann and Cam, you can correct me if I get this wrong, what he said is Rutland High, and gave all the reasons why, is the best high school in New England that they've ever evaluated for accreditation. And then he pointed to you, Bill, and he said, you're a big reason why. That's the part you're not gonna like, but it's true. You, as a leader, your whole staff, the faculty, you've just done incredible work over the years, and I'm glad to have people from the outside who are very knowledgeable, who have the kind of comparison that none of us have, to come in and say, yeah, I've visited many high schools in all six New England states, and Rutland High is the best high school. You can't take that back, he said that. And other people said it, too, and you are one of the big reasons why. So Ann and Cam, anything more? You were there at those meetings?
I would just say the buzz in that room when he started talking was incredible. I don't think he would have said those, that man would not have said those things if he did not mean them. And he had great shoes, right?
Did have nice shoes.
Now, actually, did I interrupt, Ann?
I'm sorry.
Okay. No, I was actually glad that I went, because it was, there was no exaggeration in that process. And there was one schoolteacher that stepped up and said, I wish the school board was here, which I sheeplessly raised my hand, but it's, I wanted sort of commend everybody to say the same deal, because I'm not the traditional board member that has kids in the school and sort of has that agenda route. So I'm glad that I was able to participate and see what an excellent job you guys are doing.
To add on top of that, my, I have a child in high school as well, and I got to meet all the parent, during parent-teacher conferences, and I've met all the teachers, and I just thought they were just so, it was, it was a great experience. They're really doing, you guys are doing well.
You can slink back to your seat now.
We expect more!
Let him off too easy.
Did you realize, Hannah, how good it was, how good you had it?
Go tell your friends.
All right. Thanks, Bill. All right, moving right on, superintendent report.
So I have four quick and unrelated items to report to you on. The first is that we are collecting information from all the schools on cosmetic improvements that we need to make in the schools. Why are we doing that? Because I believe if you enhance the decor, you can improve the decorum. If you take pride and show respect, something as simple as when you walk into a school, you feel it to be attractive, inviting, fresh, you feel pretty good about the place. So what we're gonna be doing, starting this year, starting this fall, is to compile a list of improvements, school by school, and start tackling them one by one. And we'll have a sequence, this is not the master facilities planning that we've talked about, this is just the day-to-day, it's improving the painting, the flooring, the signage, both exterior and interior signage that need some work. I mean, that's how you feel about a place. So the idea is to take pride, show respect, improve your environment, and we're gonna start working on that right away and doing it this year. Second, and these are all unrelated, there, there was a suggestion, this has to do with your board process, there was a suggestion that committee meetings going forward should have minutes taken and that they should be posted, and Betty behind me has graciously agreed to attend all of your committee meetings, take notes, and, and post them. So someone brought that up, and I thought it was a good idea, talked to Betty, and so we'll respond that way, okay? Third, all these totally unrelated, Secretary of Education in Vermont, Dan French, will be in Rutland next Friday. He told me that he wanted to come here to pick my brain, I told him that it would be slim pickings, so what I wanted to do is talk to students. So Bill's gonna set up a meeting for the secretary with students at the high school, he's gonna tour the high school in Stafford, and I'll talk to, to you folks about that. He'll be here in the middle of the day, Friday, the twenty-second, he wants to find out what's going on in Rutland, okay? And the fourth, again, unrelated item, is that I wanted to talk a little bit about the budget, because you're gonna be going into the budget conversation in a minute with the Stafford Tech Center and looking initially at the maintenance and capital plan. What I wanted to say about that is that the overall presentation will be predicated upon meeting student needs, making sure we have the right people in the right positions, and the right children, and the right young adults, and the right programs. And that may mean that we develop some alternative programs that are outside the school setting for later this year and definitely for next year. And that's a work in progress, we're not really ready for prime time yet, but I wanted to mention that. So it'll be an eye on student needs, but we'll also present to you a budget that's fiscally prudent, that would result in little or no increase to the tax rate. So that's our goal. There are a lot of factors in front of us that make it a challenging goal. Twelve percent increase in benefits, the city is going through the same thing, and some other factors that we'll talk about at, at the right time. So I just wanted to give sort of an overview, that our idea is to meet student needs, make sure we have the right people in the right places, the right kids in the right programs and schools, and having said that, we do so in a fiscally prudent way, and part of it through bringing in more grants to, to help us balance the budget. That's all I have.
All right. So we will move right on now, now that we are in budget season, and at the last meeting, Mari Alma presented the budget calendar for you, so we will begin, as we always do, with budget, with the Stafford Technical Center. So Melissa, I'm gonna turn things over to you, you do have that in your packet, I'd ask you to focus on the highlights of that budget, there's a lot in it, and go from there.
Awesome. Thank you very much. So I'm gonna just kind of give an overview, and then I'll introduce you to Felicia Allard, who is her, it's her first time here, she's our new assistant director, and she'll go into a little bit more of the detail of the budget. So our process is a little bit different than the typical budget. We have to start, actually, the first faculty meeting of the year, we pass out budget packets for the next fiscal year, and the reason is, is that we have to have our tuition determined and approved by this board prior to all of the high schools being able to submit their budgets. So it makes it a little bit, kind of, you're just starting the year and you're already thinking about next year, so it makes it a little challenging. When we sent this out to our staff, we asked them to have a level-funded budget, as we have for the last few years. Even with the growth that we are currently experiencing, we feel that we can make up for that through some new grant opportunities that the state of Vermont has for technical education, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a moment. Some of the considerations we had this year going into the budget, we knew that three positions that we currently have, which are full-time positions in our Perkins budget, had to be moved to the local budget this year, which was about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we knew that was gonna be a hit, we knew health insurance was looking at about a twelve percent increase, estimated at the beginning, and so those were some major factors when we talked to the faculty, thinking about what they should put and what they should not put in their budget. We have a regional advisory board, and as that, we have a finance committee, a subcommittee of that, which is made up of all of the area superintendents that we of that, which is made up of all of the area superintendents that we serve or their designees. We met twice with the finance committee, and during that time, we had five different draft budgets before we got to the budget that we ended up with here tonight. From the beginning budget until where we are, we took about 8% off that budget, so we did some cutting. Some major areas that we were cutting, basically, we looked at removing any equipment needs, and we are looking at putting those into grants. There is a new grant that they have for technical education, it's called the TIME Grant, which is an innovation and equipment grant. It used to be a separate equipment grant, a separate innovation grant, they combined that to make a greater opportunity. So we feel confident that we will be able to apply any equipment needs to that grant. The Perkins Grant is a little bit different this year, and I'll explain that in a moment. We cut back some of our field trip expenses. Looking at the last couple of years, we felt that that would be an area that we could cut, and that with the student enterprises that we have within the building, that those could also fund some of those field trips if need be. And then the final area that we made a cut is our adult education. That is now in our local budget, the daytime budget. And so what we did do is take a secretarial position. We have an anticipated retirement, and we are looking to cut that back to a halftime position. And talking, looking at the staffing, we feel that that will be a doable thing to do. So that is that. Before I turn it over to Felicia, a couple of changes. Typically, as part of this presentation, we are also seeking approval for our Perkins Grant and an equipment grant. That is not the case this year. As I mentioned, the equipment grant has been changed, and it's part of a larger, it's called the TIME Grant. What it stands for, I can't tell you off the top of my head. But it is something that will not be available to us to even apply to until April or May, so we'll come back at a later time with that. The Perkins Grant, the legislative, the federal legislation that has changed, it's gone from what they call Perkins Four to Perkins Five, and the Agency of Education is still writing the state plan, and so until the state plan is actually written, we cannot know what we're going to actually use that for. Jay Ramsey, who is with the Agency of Education, he'll be presenting a public forum at our December RAB meeting, and at that time, we'll have a little bit more detail. And as part of that, we have to do what's called a local needs assessment, which is very similar to the NIASC process, which we will start next week. We start that on Monday with a visit. But it's basically looking at different areas of programming, they're still determining what the local needs assessment will be, but basically, the results of that will determine where we can spend our money. So more to come on that, the timing of that, as they're expecting, that the draft version of the local needs assessment will be available at the end of November, and that we will have to complete that assessment by April, and then apply for the grant at the end of April for funding on July 1st. So it's going to be a very tight turnaround this year. So we should be coming back to you probably in April with our Perkins Grant. So with that, I will turn it over to Felicia. Felicia came to us from the Hartford Area Career and Tech Center. This is her first year in administration, and she has done a phenomenal job with the budget. I know, I've done that job for a few years, and she's done a great job, so I will turn it over to her.
Good evening, everyone. So I thought we would begin in your packet on page four, and I'd like to just walk you through the proposed budget. Two pieces to point out before I begin is just that our budget is developed using the fiscal year 20 base education rate, which typically will rise about 2%, so that's due to inflation. And this estimate is needed in order to figure out what our overhead assistance is that we'll be receiving from the state of Vermont. We're also basing the Perkins Grant estimate on what we received for this fiscal year, although, as Melissa pointed out, we won't know exactly what that number will be until spring. The total direct expenditures for fiscal year 21 are increased by 5.4 as compared to 8.8% last year, and this reflects the requirement to include the three positions that Melissa mentioned earlier into our local budget. And as also mentioned, the new grant requirements, we really don't understand or know yet what will be able to be funded through those, and we'll know more once we get through the local needs assessment. In addition to these three positions also mentioned earlier is the fact that salary and benefits for our staff has increased by about 12%. So with all of these things, for us to compensate for these increases, we asked, like Melissa mentioned, for the program instructors to level fund their budgets, and we also made cuts to our general technical education, adult education, and building and grounds line items. And we landed with total expenditures at 5.2 as compared to 8.9 in fiscal year 20. So total revenues for fiscal year 21 is down 0.7% from fiscal year 20. Our six semester average is calculated by taking our enrollments that we report to the state in October and March for the past six semesters. And that is, although our enrollments are strong and we're growing, that is probably going to be about two years before our lowest enrollments drop off. Based on these figures, our net expenditures increased by 8% overall. Our tuition is $17,895, and this is calculated by taking our net expenditures and dividing it by the six semester FTE. However, each town within our sending district is billed accordingly based on their individualized six semester average. And the reason for that is so that there's not a lot of fluctuation or dramatic increases or swings for those towns. Tuition for fiscal year 21 has increased by 7.5%. As Melissa mentioned earlier, we did trim that down quite a substantial amount. Based on last year's tuition rate, we were right about in the middle of the pack in terms of the Vermont Career and Technical Centers, and we expect that to be the same this year. Thank you.
Okay. So questions for Melissa, Felicia? Yeah, Charlene?
Do you know, I'm just looking at the line, the overhead expenses?
Overhead assistance? Uh, overhead expenses, yes.
What's the increase in that?
So the $65,000, it would probably be a combination of looking at special populations guidance. It's kind of looking at above the administration, all of those adds.
I'm sorry, the $65,000 is, that represents like new positions, or?
Not new positions. Those are basically just looking at increase in maybe heating, fuel, any expenses like that for overhead, lighting.
Okay, there's a bunch of stuff behind that that we just don't see.
Yes, yes. If we gave you the full packet, it would look like this.
Early?
I'm a little concerned with the 7.5% increase in the tuition and how that's going to affect enrollment. I do know, in theory, it is, schools cannot limit per se students outgoing, although there has been some rumblings in some outlying districts because of the ever-increasing cost to cut back sending and trying to do other alternative arrangements. What type of factor do you think the 7.5% increase is going to?
Well, I think that's one of the beauties with the finance committee, with the regional advisory board, the superintendents for all of our sending districts are on that. And so that is a number that Dave Younts, who is with Mill River Unified School District, that is one that he said that his board would tolerate. Brooke Olson Farrell from the Slate Valley Union, she also concurred. Marcia Bruce, who represents Jeannie Collins from the Rutland Northeast, they were all, you know, obviously, when we came in at 15.5 was as requested, that was obviously not going to be acceptable, and we knew that going in, which is why we came in with four other variations. And so after our first meeting, they gave us a goal that it needed to be below 8%, and if it was below 8%, that they would be able to get that with their board without any impact on enrollments, was their feeling. So we were working to, you know, we basically said, "What's the target we need to get at?" And that was the goal that they set for us.
And in addition, I think, you know, this reflects that we didn't have to impact student programming at this point. Further cuts would have meant that.
Right. And that was one of the reasons that we went with the adult education position as a position to cut. In tech ed, if we cut any positions, it cuts our revenue, because the number of students that can be in a program are dictated by the number of adults that are in there. So in a heavy lab, we're only allowed to have 16 students in that lab unless there's a paraeducator, which allows us to have an additional five, and every student is a revenue when you're looking at a budget. And so if we cut a paraeducator in a program, then that's five less tuition that we could have coming in. So we were looking for a position to be able to cut that did not impact our revenue.
Early?
Just to follow up, talking about enrollment, are there any low-enrolled programs that are on the watch list right now?
Right now, all of our programs are, we, the Program Review Committee, which is another subcommittee of the RAB, has an 80% rate of a six semester average, and right now, every one of our programs is above that.
Thank you. Allison?
So I think you answered my question that this, the cuts are not going to impact the programs or your ability to deliver what you need to for.
Right.
Okay. And my other question was, the chair, we have, there's someone, is it you, Erin, that sits on the RAB?
She's, you're the--
So as a board member, is there anything you would, I don't know if you've been involved or to kind of enlighten the board on, since you're the representative?
I think Stafford's doing a great job altogether. They really look at the student needs, they're dealing with the state, you know, sort of directives and managing that really well. I do sit on the committee for the program, committee in the services and, you know, program we offer the students, and everybody's really encouraged with enrollment, how to continue it, and also sort of trickle down into the middle school ages to get them, you know, engaged and participating, not only here, but in outside schools. And I think just the outreach itself is also really great. You know, everything is really modern, like I actually have, you know, the brochure, but it's really great. I mean, there's a lot of information, and it's attracting kids, I think. So, yeah. Yeah.
Great, good, it's a good question, Matt.
Are there caps that the schools? Are there caps on how many kids the schools can send? I bet it was more, as many kids as want, can apply, and it's however many get accepted into the programs?
That is why it is, that is the way it should be, yes.
Okay. However--
However, there have been school districts that have been noted in the minutes of their school board meetings. One is, one she mentioned tonight about the limit, trying to limit outgoing because of the number of students that are no longer in the building.
Can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
Because we have, there is a limit as far as coming to Rutland High Schools, school to school, for choice. How does that work with Stafford? Is that included in those numbers, or is it just a separate? A separate, I just wanted to make sure.
It's a good question, though.
Yeah, I was like, wait a minute.
Sure. Understood. Matt, so did that answer?
I just wanted to clarify, that's what I, as far as I understood--
Right, well, that was a good follow-up question.
--there are no caps, it's about how many kids get--
Right, because there's no alignment.
Correct.
Get accepted from, I mean, there might be kids that don't come because there's not space in the programs for them, but I didn't think it was the same as school choice, so that's an ethical issue then, that it sounds like to me you're suggesting.
And one more thing that relates to the PLP, you know, we had discussed in program meetings, you know, students sort of learning about themselves, what trades are out there, looking at how they learn, you know, just all sorts of, you know, stuff that really gives them a ground on who they are, what they want to be, and how they fit into the work world, you know? It's great.
Cam, and then Joanne?
Yeah, I had two quick questions.
Sure.
On the, I need bifocals.
That's okay.
Under the STEM Outreach Coordinator, is that a combination, or is that one person?
That is one person.
Okay, and it was because the new hire that had more skills, or?
It was originally when the--
I go over the line, tell me to stop.
No, it's fine. Originally, about six years ago, when the STEM program was just starting at Stafford, there was specifically a position called the STEM Outreach Coordinator, and it was developing the STEM program, and that kind of morphed over the years into our Outreach Coordinator. So it's one thing that, because budget, when we look at our budget, we're looking at a longitudinal budget, we kind of have it for reference, probably in one more year, the STEM piece will come off, but it's there as kind of a reminder to us that that was also the STEM position.
And the increase, just to kind of follow up on that, is we moved a few things from one line item to another because we had some items that were coming out of admin that just made more sense to be out of outreach, so you're seeing kind of a shuffle.
Oh, so it isn't all a person, it's also--
It is everything, yes.
That's, I was going to say a hefty raise.
Yes.
The other question I have is, when you say shifting stuff from sort of the STEM budget to the local budget, is that literally going to show up in the Rutland, or you have two budgets within your budget? In other words, when you cut the adult education, is that going to show up in the Rutland City budget, or is there a sub-budget that we send that much to STEM?
That shows up in our tuition rate, and then Rutland City is charged based on their six semester average.
Okay.
So they'll look at our tuition, and it'll be calculated by the six semester average.
And I do want to commend you that in terms of, the 8% looks huge to me, too, but I realize it's a complex animal, and so proposing cuts and taking out X is very difficult. So I want to, I'm sort of the penny pincher of the group, but I do want to commend that you made a valid effort, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cam. Joanne?
You mentioned that we'll be in the middle. Did you, did you talk to anybody about that, or you're just kind of guesstimating?
It's been consistent, and tell me if I'm wrong, but it's been consistently that way for many years, and I know that more than likely, every other technical center is probably in the same boat as we are in terms of the budget increases with health insurance. So I sort of anticipate that that's going to be similar.
The Agency of Education provides projections on where they believe the tech centers will be, and so based on kind of the projections from the previous years, we're looking that we'd be in about the same point. So.
Early?
Just a quick question, do we have a pre-tech program?
We have a pre-tech foundations program, which are intro classes. Right now, we offer them with Rutland High School, and they're available to ninth and 10th graders, so they get a chance to explore the different programs over at Stafford for one marking quarter.
Okay, thank you.
Mike?
You mentioned the equipment, is that a Perkins Grant that you have to wait till April, May?
So that is the TIME Grant. It's a new grant. They've combined about three different grants into one grant, and so there's new regulations coming out. There's a competitive grant that's part of it and a non-competitive. The non-competitive is where we think we'll be able to get all of the equipment needs that we have.
Okay, so if you, let's say April, May, you don't get the grant, whatever, how are you going to be sitting for equipment?
Well, I think the programs that we were able to cut the equipment also have enterprise accounts, so student-run businesses, and so in talking with the instructors, you know, they'll be able to use some of those funds for that as well. So I'm fairly confident we'll be able to meet the equipment needs.
Okay, so one's going to be the, you know, dead, drop dead, you need a new welder, blah, 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 and you don't get it by May, or you don't get the money by May, what's the B plan?
The B plan would be to look at some of our contingency funds if we needed to, and to go that route.
Okay. Thank you. Erin?
Maybe you guys can just speak to the upcoming academic needs as far as classes, English, math, et cetera, and just speak to that and explain to the board, you know, what you see those needs being.
It's really hard to predict at this point, but with our increased enrollments, we are finding that we have a lot of students who are coming with some higher academic needs, meaning that right now, we have English classes and math classes that are combining general college prep honors levels. We have currently a math teacher who is teaching two completely different curriculums. We're actually partnering right now, trying to, with Rutland High School, to provide an overage to a Rutland High School math teacher, but we know math is a difficult area to get overages, but we think we have found someone who's--
Early, get back in.
We're hiring. But what we are looking to do is, and for us, we have new students every, you know, every two years, and so we really don't know until students are accepted what the academic needs are. But through the Perkins Grant, the way it's being described to us of how it's going to be, we're hoping that we are going to be able to offer some additional academics, particularly in the area of science and math, so that all of our students that are coming from, that, you know, perhaps aren't Rutland High School students, who are coming to us and needing academics, we're going to be able to make sure that we're meeting their academic needs so that they can get to the career that they want, whether it's into a post-secondary school where they need to have an honors level and a lab science. We, you know, we work with Rutland High School for a chemistry, but we're finding a need for bio. We found a lot of kids that because of scheduling needs for academics, they're not coming to Stafford. And so we want to make, take that barrier away and open up some opportunities.
Thank you. Quick one, sorry. Is there any way we could get sort of like the last five years, not an urgency issue, but in terms of, because I was just curious, if we return money, does it operate the same way? And so like last year's budget, did you spend 100% or how was that finalized?
So tech ed is a little bit different in that we have to, if we spend, there's a certain percentage, and Mary Alma maybe can fill it in a little bit, but we have a window. If there is any excess money above that window, we have to return it to the towns, and so the money is returned. We aren't really allowed to keep a large reserve fund.
Oh, I wasn't suggesting that. I was more interested in what projections are actuals, so that we can see over time, if you give us eight percent and it turns out to be nine percent because you had to take contingency or something.
Historically, that goes through the Regional Advisory Board Finance Committee, and they have that detail, and the RAB has really been the one to handle that, and this board is just kind of approving with the RAB. So, we can provide that in the future if that's something that the board would like.
All right. All right, so this is an information only this evening. I believe at the next meeting, we will ratify.
December tenth.
December tenth, okay, not at the next meeting, December tenth, two meetings from tonight, we will ratify that. All right, thank you. Melissa and Felicia, welcome, and thank you for joining us. All right, now I'll ask Michael and Mary Alma to come up in Budget Maintenance and Capital Plan.
Good evening. Over the past couple of years, at this particular meeting, I've offered you a full copy of my budget, each line item. This year, in an effort to save a little bit of time, I've given you a one-sheet document that shows you the above fifteen thousand dollar projects that I've completed or have been working on this year, and the fifteen thousand or above items that we're working on for next year. Everything else within our budget is level funded, so we don't have large increases anywhere else. So, the larger budgets, or the larger budget items that we're looking for are in the FY twenty-one proposed budget. We've had some issues with our smart boards and our projectors, and we've had to increase the costs that we are dedicating to those monies. We're trying to come up with alternative ways of working on those items, but in the interim, we are really recognizing that there is a larger cost for putting those together. A couple of the larger items that we are looking at taking care of, you'll notice the parking for the Northeast Primary School and the kitchen rehab over at Allen Street Campus. For anyone that hasn't been at Allen Street Campus, that kitchen is in significant need of some work. We had our, we had our architectural team over there a couple of weeks ago, and they're working with us to give us an idea of what is needed to get that area up for the long-term for the Allen Street Campus. The rest of the information there is very straightforward, but I'm willing to entertain any questions you all may have.
Michael, can I just say one thing that's very important for the board to know, and that is in italics, "to be considered." So, these are proposals pending the facilities assessment, and we are hoping that the Building Committee will meet, number one, to approve the RFP for this master plan, long-term facilities assessment, and then set all these projects sequentially and having the board decide that. So, what you have on the right side for next year is a proposal that's significantly higher than this year's budget, but it'll be up, we wanted you to see what's been proposed, but the Building Committee will then weigh in as we do the facilities assessment during this school year to determine what needs to be done right away and how you all sequence that out this year or next year. Won't all be done this year.
So, Hurley, you're the Chair of the Building Committee?
Yes.
I have two questions, Michael. First, the smart board and projectors, should that be through the tech budget and not the building?
I have been, I've been working very closely with Patricia, and between the two of us, we've, one, identified the difference in the manufacture of the laptops which are causing our increased costs, and because of that, we're trying to come up with some alternatives to prevent these costs. Yeah, we are working together, we're working together primarily because it's the maintenance department that does the installation of all this equipment. Patricia and her crew does the interface work with it, the software, if you will, whereas the maintenance department does the hardware installation.
And the second question I have is, are our students at Allen Street serviced by our food service?
They are.
So, they are?
Yes.
And they cook in both places, or do they deliver food from the high school over?
Scott has some increased plans that I'm sure he'll talk about at a later meeting for the increased usage of that kitchen facility. He's got some very good plans, which we would love to, we would love to see come to fruition, but to do that, we need to improve the condition of that facility. Additionally, we want to take a look at improving the condition of that facility should we decide it have a different need at another point in time or even an increased need with where it's at.
Charlene?
The carpeting at RIS, is that, so that's going to happen in two, two years?
It's been happening over the course of the last four or five years.
It's just continuing on, and then?
Yes, so that we, so that we don't have a large spike of money. We do a portion of it throughout a couple of years. That way, we can steadily, we can steadily budget, so we don't see a huge spike in any one year or another.
And then the kitchen rehab, is that, like, as far as you're concerned, all in? Once, if this, this is going to give you what you need to be up and running in appliances and whatever it is?
Yes, yes, that was, that was one of the bits of information I saw it from our architectural firm, was to make sure that we had all of the equipment, not only that we know we need right now, but with what Scott wants to do over there, what he will need to be able to do that.
Okay.
Erin?
So, I had a question about the stair coverings at RIS. So, that's, that's been going on for years as well.
That has, that has been, yes.
Okay, so that's just a staged piece. Is this going to be the last year we're doing this, or when are we going to finish? Because it's literally been years.
Yes, it has literally been years. There are a number of, there's a number of stairwells over there, and as we do finish off one stairwell, we move into another one. I cannot give you a definitive answer. I have not looked at that, but I know that this is one of the larger pieces that we need to take care of, which is the church, I'm sorry, the, yeah, the church street side entrance. That's the one that's, that's a significant one that we need to work on.
Right, and so, like, anti-slip tread, I feel like what's been there has been very slippery, and this was my concern many years ago, but it's been going on. So, what are we using for materials to?
We're using a, we're using a similar material, but again, just like if you retread a tire or if you replace your tires, you come up with a much less slippery area, yes. So, the newer ones will, will help prevent that issue.
Okay, and then the parking areas at Northeast, can you explain? I feel like Northeast is really flat, like maybe new lines or something, but is it, are we repaving? What are we?
Repaving, I'm sorry, I should have stated that specifically. This is a repavement of that entire stretch. It's a very long stretch, with the exception of the area in between Stafford Tech and the White Wing of the high school, this is the worst of the parking areas that we have at the schools. It's the next one in line that needs to be done. We took care of, we took care of Longfellow two years ago. We took care of the middle and intermediate school three or four years ago. This is the next one in line to be taken care of.
So, is Northwest on the agenda as well for upcoming year?
Northwest is not, Northwest is not on the agenda. Northwest sits back behind. It's in good shape compared to the rest of them. After, after the Northeast, the maintenance department will probably be looking at taking care of portions of the high school, whether we do it as a single package for the entire parking area there, or whether we do the front and the rear areas also, I'm sorry, separately. But yes, Northwest is in good shape compared to everywhere else.
Okay, last question.
Yes, ma'am.
It's the paving, actually, it's not the last one, but about the paving.
That's okay.
The, are we going to tear it up, or are we just going to pave over it?
Right now, the bulk of the work should only need a repavement. However, if we are, or as the contractor, whomever we hire, starts tearing it up, if the contractor identifies that there's more of a need for a more significant repair, we will do it at the same time.
Okay. Can I ask an unrelated question to the budget? What is the status of the solar project? And, because I saw people working at middle school the other day, so I guess I just want to know what's happening with that, and we're going to continue in the spring, as Dave said, but what's happening now to keep the ball rolling?
Current. The current information on the solar, the solar portion of this Phase Three project, the contractor has installed the solar panels on the roof of the Keith Gym.
That's what they were doing.
That's what they were doing, yes, and they are complete with that project, with the exception of the work that the electric company needs to do, which is the installation of a new pole and transformer, and then tying in the whole system. So, the work from the solar perspective is complete. We're waiting now on the electric company to finish off their portion of it to tie it together.
And then once that's done, are we done until the spring, or is there more that's planned for throughout the winter? Because?
That is, that is all of the solar installation we will be able to do until we take care of the rest of the issues.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Allison?
So, back to the kitchen, big ticket item.
Kitchen.
So, how is this going to, I know you said there's, there's big plans for it, but how is it going to impact our students, or what is going to be the improvement in quality, or, it's a big ticket item when we educate, so how, how is that going to impact?
It is a big ticket item, and...
Is it going to enhance the programs they have?
It will very significantly enhance the programs that the program manager wants to do.
Okay.
Does that, does that make sense? Thank you, Scott, please.
That's what I'm trying to get at, you know, it's going to impact. He can't take it anymore.
Explain to them what they want.
Tell us about your kitchen.
So, the kitchen's a disaster. If you haven't seen it, I hope you come take a visit. I'll start with that. One of our goals is really to build a school-to-work program and be able to have our kids actually in there working, and hopefully to build a substitute list for local restaurants where we can then employ our students, so.
Okay, great.
That's cool. Anything else?
Just that's getting it to the kids.
I like people to come in and just do their business and win.
That is unfortunately how a lot of my work goes. I get the information from the building administration, and they say, "We want to do this," and I say, "Okay, we can do this," and we put the money in the budget. I forget exactly why they want to do it, but I know it's a great reason.
Mike?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Do, I don't see anything here for vehicles of some type. Are we putting money aside for vehicles, or are we, are we going to be all of a sudden, bam, we need four buses, and you know what, you're out of a job? No, kidding, kidding, just kidding.
That's quite all right. It would certainly be a de-stresser. As stated, this is a list of larger projects that are not level funded with this year. Every year, we put in money for two school buses. We still have that money in the, in the budget for the two school buses. These are items that are specific for this fiscal year. Everything else is level funded. The fuel, the repair costs, the purchase of the vehicles, those are all level funded.
Just one more. Charlene, and then we got to hold on.
No, it's a good one. I'm just wondering, can you just explain us a little bit about the, what does a library rehab entail?
This particular library rehab, we need to, we need to replace the flooring in there, and then primarily it's the, the book storage area, the circulation desk, almost, it almost mirrors what we did at the middle school this year, which was one of the projects, but it will include the flooring as well.
Okay. Please?
Okay, did you, yeah, one quick?
So, in the, I don't want to say consolidation, but in our purchasing and consolidating purchasing, I assume a lot of that goes through facilities, you know, toilet?
Yes.
Bathroom supplies and so forth. So, you don't have to do it now, but it would be nice to see what that savings is at some point when we see the full budget. Because we're purchasing in bulk, right, with the city?
With the city, right.
For supplies, not paper towels, like, I mean, that's under Mike's budget, isn't it?
We have not started that yet.
Okay.
We have not started that yet.
There would be a savings ideally.
Potentially, potentially.
We don't know that there's savings yet. We're still exploring the possibility.
Perfect, so I guess just keep us posted then, all I'm asking.
Yes, the budget that is presented does not address that. The budget that has been presented is, again, level funded with what we did last year. If there's a savings by combining with the city, we will certainly show that.
Perfect.
Okay, good. All right, so there's going to be more to come on this, and the Building Committee will be scheduling a meeting at some point in the not-too-distant future. There's a lot of things that are going to be coming up, including evaluation of Michael's plan as it rolls into the budget, and certainly Mary Alma's on, on top of that, so we will have more discussion about that as well. So, I thank you both for...
More next meeting.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. Yes, thank you. We're moving now on to old business, and in the, we discussed at the last meeting, there was the Board Operating Protocols. A few people had some questions. Matt, you had a question about a policy. There was a policy in the policy manual that's very, very detailed. I don't even know why that exists on a lot of board what, this is really the rules of engagement that are different than a particular policy. And Anne had asked a question on one of the issues with, not an issue, but board members serving on committees, and what constituted a committee that we're talking about here, which is like board, board committees and committees to which a board member may be assigned liaisons, such as, you know, the Stafford Tech Advisory Board, the Pension Committee, and activities and athletics. So, what I'd like to do, we had a discussion, this was all work that we had done at the retreat, is to adopt this. Now, I understand as independently elected officials, as I said, I mean, there's a lot of latitude in how we approach things, but I do think that this helps frame our rules of engagement as a board, so I'd like to see this after the, you know, to get adopted this evening, and we all agree, and then we use this as new board members come on, and as reminders to ourselves that, you know, we are committing to these, to these rules. So, I would like a motion to approve.
So, move.
Second?
Second.
All right, Cam?
Oh, I just wanted to, I don't believe in giving up power, so I would like to have roll call vote, and I have planned to vote no, just because I didn't scrutinize the list and I wasn't here last time.
Okay, that's fine.
I'm not opposed to the principle, I just the details, the devil's on the details.
Understood. Okay, any other? Yeah, Anne.
I want to just make sure I understand that these are rules of engagement, yes, but we can stray from these rules if we need to.
There's nothing that prevents you from, yeah.
I mean, there was something brought about, brought up about the length of meetings, and yeah, sure, we'd all like them to be shortened, you know, to the point, but...
Well, we're going to get to that.
Twice a month, so if we need to spend more time on something, I just want to know that that's available.
Yeah, that's available. Whether anybody can stand is another, another thing altogether, but that is available. Any, anything else? All right, so I will, we'll do a roll call vote.
This vote is about the guidelines that we went through at the retreat.
Yeah, 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 and, and Cam's asked for a roll call.
And I'm the contrarian, yeah.
No, no, I understand the spirit in which you're, okay, so let's, let's do that. Matt?
I, no.
Charlene?
Aye.
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 Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Good, all right.
Predictable result, yes.
All right.
How do you feel?
Happy.
I don't, I don't believe there's any other old business, although it is that time of the year, and I can't believe another year has passed, and someone in the audience grows facial hair during the month of, yes, and we also have a birthday a week from Tuesday. We're not meeting on Tuesday, and so that needs to go recognized as well. I was going to bring that up, but this is birthday month for someone in the audience. So, Rob, very, you know, quickly, this is Movember, and each year you do this, and...
Thanks for noticing and for giving me thirty seconds. So, in November, every year, I support the Movember Foundation. The Movember Foundation is a nonprofit that seeks to support research to prevent testicular cancer, prostate cancer, support men's mental health, and work on suicide prevention. The entire thing about Movember is it's Men Health, Men's Health Month, and we want to prevent men from dying too young. And I will say, you know, on a personal note, as an example today, a friend of mine passed away. He suffered in silence for a long time. I wish he had reached out to more people. Men in general don't talk a lot. He needed to talk to people. I caught him a little too late. But so, if you... But so, if you have a man in your life, or you're a man, go to the Movember Foundation, look up how to keep people healthy. It's pretty simple. Don't drink, don't smoke, exercise, eat healthy, talk to another human being, get help when you need it. Thanks so much.
Thanks, Rob. All right.
And that's, I'm a walk-in billboard, that's why the mustache.
Well, it's hard to believe, though, another year's passed, because, you know...
Maybe this year he'll keep it.
No, he always gets it out.
Yeah.
All right, new business. Okay, on the topic of board meetings, I'm going to spend a couple of minutes, kind of like, going to be a Festivus moment. Everybody remember Festivus from Seinfeld and the airing of grievances?
You said that before, and we never got to air grievances.
I know. Then we'll have it followed by... Followed by feats of strength. All right, so, all right. So I wanted to talk about this just in meetings, because it, and I've got some handwritten notes I'm going to go over. It's been my observation, after 13 years of this, just talking about staying at the fair too long, but 13 years of this, that we are the embodiment of Parkinson's Law. And for those of you that are not familiar with Parkinson's Law, it was developed in 1955 by Cyril Park, North Quilt Parkinson, who was an economist. And Parkinson's Law is that work expands so as to fill the time available for its completion. I am going to propose for consideration at the board. And our work is different than, for example, the Board of Alderman, because we are more like a board of an organization that has professional employees, and that is who's doing the work. So I'm going to propose for...
I don't think you meant it that way.
What's that?
I don't think you meant it that way.
Well, no, they're doing the work, we are basically overseeing that.
Yeah, I was just, phrase locations.
Right. So, I'm going to propose for consideration, and just for consideration, not for any decisions, but to consider, instead of meeting on the second and fourth Tuesday in the month, that we meet as a board on the second Tuesday of the month. There would be one board meeting a month, a richer board meeting, and hold a fourth for committee meetings at an earlier time, unless there is a need. Committee meetings then would be held on the fourth Tuesday, beginning at 4:30 or 5:30. We could stack them back to back so as to allow board members to attend. And during, for example, budget season, like now, that second meeting of the month could be held in abeyance for any specific budget-only items. I'm also proposing greater scope and expansion of the committee structure. I think we need to do more work in committees, less work here at the meetings, more work in committees, and richer conversations at these meetings. I really believe we are the embodiment of Parkinson's Law. We are filling time to fill time. I would like to establish a budget and finance committee, which can work closely with Mary Alma as our CFO, on developing the budget and monitoring finance. Also would work closely with what would now be called the facilities committee, which Hurley Chairs, this building is in grounds, there are large projects coming up with a facilities master plan. There will be a lot of need for work with the finance department on the planning of that. I also think that for our meetings, that I would like to see us meet during the year at schools. I would like to see us meet at each of our schools in the district one time during the year, and actually take our show on the road. And this is something that we can do, and PEG TV can tape it and air it at a later date. But I think if we can enrich these meetings, and make these meetings more meaningful, and get more work done at the committee level, and look at expanding, the PEI initiative, the Performance Excellence Initiative, Dave and Rob and others have taken that and given us something to work with moving forward. We haven't devoted the time necessary, it's because we have so much of this. And maybe it's just because I've been doing this for a long, long time, but it can wear you down, and I really don't think we're using time valuably. We're also taking up other people's time. If we adopted this approach, and again, it would take all of us to move forward on something like this, and to really enrich the committee structure, and take a look at what that might look like, I think at the very least, budget and finance is something that would really be helpful. And not to micromanage...
Aimed at me again?
No, no, no. I wasn't, Cam. I understand the spirit in which you, you know, you bring those things up, and I think that's important. But it would be an opportunity, for example, for you to be able to spend more time, and more richer time, in that, at that level, where you really do feel that you're getting answers to your questions. So, it's the spirit which I intend. It would require change to Policy 1520. I would propose that we would start it in January 2020. And again, during budget cycle, this would be an opportunity to have that second meeting if we need to for budget. Now, the good news is, that despite the fact that this proposal would reduce the number of meetings, your pay will not decrease at all.
Oh.
So, there would not be any docking of pay for having fewer meetings. And for those of you at home, I'm being incredibly facetious, no one gets paid anything for doing this. But in other words, I want us to consider this. I really think that we would be better served, and would actually find more meaningful service, and actually find more people that would like to get involved in this, if we had a different meeting schedule and a richer and fuller committee. So, I'm putting that out there. We can discuss it later, if you have anything you'd like to discuss right now. This is just from where I sit, and...
Well, it'll probably shock everybody, but I actually fundamentally approve the idea.
No, it doesn't shock me, because I do know, Cam, that you want a lot more information, and this would provide an opportunity, I think, to get that information in a satisfactory manner. I don't think there's anything about that, that, and that is due diligence. I just think it allows it to be done in a more natural way. So, I'm not surprised that, frankly, that, so, I appreciate the feedback. Yeah, Hurley?
I think it's a great idea, because I think we need to do more in the committees, where we can actually dig in our heels, and get into the weeds sometimes, as they say, and look at the projects that we have to do, and then do that presentation to the board, you know, when it comes up at the beginning of the month after we do our work.
And committee meeting minutes being in the board packets? I mean, Anne brought that up, and I thought that was a very good, you know, suggestion, Anne observing about making certain that the, you know, work that's done in committees is available, that we know what's going on, that that information, so we would really become, I mean, these are the boards that I'm accustomed to. These are the boards that I've served on, and these are the boards that I work for. And I find it to be very effective. It holds us accountable, it holds others accountable, holds committee chairs accountable. So anyway, others, any observations or quick, Duan?
So would you perceive then that the committee chairs, or that they're designee, would give a report at the board meeting?
Yes.
And then that way, when folks were making presentations, that someone from the board would also...
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
I like the idea.
I would expect, I would expect that, yeah, absolutely.
Dick, did you mention the policy committee too? If you did, I missed it, but...
Well, I, the committees that are currently existing are, you know, that stays in place. I was suggesting that we add a new committee, which is the Budget and Finance Committee. I think buildings and grounds, I don't know, you might want to, facilities, I don't know whether, you know, facilities committee is kind of the general term that's used. But there may be other things that, you know, we feel would help us to feel better about our oversight and our meaningful service, while at the same time, as I've said, making certain that we stay in our lanes, which I think we're doing a better job at. I think this board is starting to mature, I think it's really starting to move in a good direction. And this just may be a way to help us, but we're all really going to have to make this lift together. Other things, options? Feedback? Anybody doesn't like this idea? It's okay if you don't.
The only thing I might suggest as an alternative is to not limit membership, so that if somebody wants to be on every committee in this, it's not me. But if somebody wants to be a member of every board, that...
Just let me know, I mean, I can certainly do that, yeah. Yeah, Anne?
So, I love the idea. At the first meeting of the month, the business meeting, I guess, is what it sounds like.
Yeah, that's a good way of putting it.
With the consent agenda, it won't take too long theoretically. What else could...
That's what we need, see, that's why we need to really spend more time thinking about what should we be using our time for. Because I can tell you, after doing this, well, I don't know how many years I've been in this seat, four maybe, somewhere in there, that kind of coming up with the agendas, I really would like to hear more from the schools as well, in terms of what do you think is really important that we ought to know? I mean, we, there's certain things that are cyclical, you know, for example, the Stafford Tech budget and the school improvement plans are things that we do as a matter of course, and we would still do those things. But, I really would love to be able to see have much richer, and Dave, I mean, you've been doing this enough time and enough boards...
Well, you and I talked about this part too, letting each school come alive in the minds of the board. So, we go to Northeast School, let's say, and Suzanne and her staff, and maybe some parents are there. There's some interaction, a presentation at the school site. So, instead of sitting in Longfellow, maybe you've had kids at Northeast, but this way, you get a chance to see what it's like at the school site. And knowing that this might happen, I talked to Tom Leepolt at PEG TV today about changing tonight's meeting, and I mentioned this to him, and he said, "We absolutely could do that." Not sure we could broadcast it live, but as you mentioned, we could record, they could record it, and then...
Well, it's not like we're taking phone calls, we're having a contest going here, so the live part is less of me.
I think it would help the schools come alive in your minds.
Imagine, okay, so Melissa's coming to, and Felicia are coming to talk about Stafford. Wouldn't it be great to actually be there? To actually have that meeting at Stafford? You know, Bill's talking about, yeah, you know, Bill's talking about all the great, I mean, Suzanne in Northeast, obviously, and Lauren over at Northwest, and the intermediate with Andy, and middle school with Patty, and Sharon, and Allen Street campus. Scott's got some incredible ideas about how to really enrich the programming there. Next time, we will meet at 77 Grove, the next meeting, not this, two weeks from tonight. We are going to meet at 77 Grove, and the kids are really excited about presenting. So if we can do things like that, I think you're going to find it much more interesting, much more rewarding, and really give the schools a chance to really show all the wonderful things that are going on in the district. So, what I would like to do is refer this to the policy committee, because this is a change in policy. So, I would like, Erin, if you could get this referred to policy committee and discuss it, and I would like to bring it back with a recommendation at the next meeting.
Sounds good.
I wrote the one number down, we'll check the rest.
Fifteen twenty, yeah.
I'd like to make a motion, we refer this to policy.
Okay, second. Any discussion?
I was just looking at the board meeting schedule with respect to the budget. Wouldn't interfere with that at all if you started this in January. Because if you look back on that schedule, it would all fit quite nicely.
We can vote it in in time for the...
Yeah, yeah. All right, so we have a motion, a second to refer any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so that'll be brought back. All right, any other new business, other than birthday wishes?
Birthday.
Who's? When's yours, Jess? Okay, so, six days after, all right. All right, we have no need for executive session. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right.